Okay, great. Thank you everybody for coming in person and on Zoom. Six of four, so we're gonna call this meeting to order additions and deletions to the agenda.
So Chair.
Yep.
We, the Board received via email, a petition that we can receive under correspondence. And I'd like to add an agenda item E to set for the Board to discuss and set a date for a vote on the petition and an informational meeting vote prior to the petition vote.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a deletion, Bill. I should've mentioned to you earlier today I met with you. We can take C under new business financials law. We just discussed it at the last meeting. I'll wait until our next regular scheduled meeting. Okay, there's nobody else. Correspondents?
No, I, oh, sorry. Do you want to add something? So ECTV and the town meeting and how that's gonna look if we can talk about that maybe under new business?
Alright, do you want to just swap that out for C, Bill?
Yeah, that's a great idea.
ECTV and town meeting. Alright, great. Thank you Abby. Anybody else? Okay, hearing none. On to correspondence. Obviously, we've got the petition that was sent out by Ellen. Is there anything else for correspondence?
I would just like to publicly thank Ellen for her efficiency in communicating to the Board the receipt of the petition, the checking of all the names, and the follow-up with the Secretary of State. She did that all within a 24-hour period. I really appreciate that to allow the Board to have all the knowledge they need for tonight's meeting.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Bill. Yes, thank you to Ellen for that. Any other correspondence? Okay, hearing none then. We're on to members of the public. One thing I'd like to try and establish, which I know your select Board does, if anybody wants to speak and share, please feel free to, but try and limit your time to two minutes and allow for others to speak before you speak again. So, members of the public.
Can I just say one little quick thing?
Yeah, sure.
I'm sending out an email right now to families, but we will not have a bus run tomorrow. So if anybody's on this, I just want to give them that heads up. It will resume the normal bus run on Thursday.
Okay, any parents that are here on Zoom? There you go.
Is that the morning bus run?
Yes.
Yes.
All day.
All day. So morning and afternoon?
Correct.
Okay, great.
Wyndham and William Gray, no bus.
Okay, great. Thank you for this.
Thanks for here.
Any other members of the public? Okay, then we're gonna move on to old business. Warren, FY '24 budget action.
Beth.
Yep.
Beth.
Yep.
Sorry, I couldn't get my lines to work.
Oh, no, nothing, okay. Sorry, real quick, Crystal, before you go, Abby, Howie Iris is here also.
Can I speak as a member of the public?
Yeah, Crystal's on and then yeah.
Great, I'll speak out Crystal.
Okay.
What was the question?
No, Abby, I'm just telling you Howie Iris just arrived. Otherwise, Crystal has the floor for members of the public.
Harris?
Uh, Howie Iris. I.
Oh, I, I, R, yes, sorry.
Yep, that's okay.
R D here.
Yeah, no, that's okay. Alright, go ahead.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, Crystal.
Just wanted to give a quick reminder. I know things get pretty crazy when the kids are going outside or coming in in the morning, in the afternoon. But if the staff could just check those doors and make sure they are locked during school hours, it would be greatly appreciated.
Okay, thank you. Great. Thank you, Crystal. Yeah.
Lee Maravoff. Hi, everyone. I think you all know me. I'm Lee Maravoff. I just want to check in and say it's been a great year. We've had the kids at our farm since September, maybe three weeks a month. And I've seen a lot of improvement. I'm really glad to see the kids have very little PTSD, unlike other public schools. I see they're engaged, they're active, they participate. We've only got one or two kids. I think Erin, your child doesn't come, but most of the kids.
Excuse me? You're not supposed to talk about children in a board meeting and say names.
Okay, I didn't say a name?
You.
I did not say your child's name. Anyway, I just want to say that it's been fantastic. We've seen such improvement this year. The kids are taking a lot of the materials we're working on and they're bringing it into school. And we had the great privilege to be in here a few weeks ago when there was some teachers that weren't here and we were able to work with them. And I see the new floor is down and that looks fantastic. So as far as a public school goes, I see it's got a lot of active children who have curiosity. They seem to be learning. They seem to be growing. And just as a member of the community who spent a lot of time with these children over the past eight or nine years, I think it's fantastic. So I just want to say good job, good job, everyone, good job, kids that we can't name, and hooray.
Thank you. Ross, I see your hand is up. Did you want to?
Yes, I just want to say we need to keep comments limited to three minutes, otherwise we'll be here till midnight.
Thank you, Ross. I actually, in talking with Bill, I set that limit to two. I'm sorry if you didn't hear that, but the commentary would be left to two minutes. And again, everybody, please feel free to speak, but allow other people who have not spoken a chance to have their time to share. Okay, any other?
We've also had someone join Zoom. That is iPad. iPad two?
Yes, Tom Ranger.
Tom, thank you, Tom.
And Sally Newton is here.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Any other members of the public? Sally and then Howie.
Do I need to come up?
You can do whatever you want.
I just wanted to mention two quick things. One is that last Tuesday, Mr. PJ's class, I had the privilege of going up with them to the Vermont State House, and they performed for the House of Representatives. They did the devotional, which is a three-minute, can be a prayer song, whatever. But our kids performed and they were amazing. They stood up there with confidence. They were a little nervous in this huge house of representatives with all these people. And they sang beautifully and they played the ukuleles and they got a standing ovation. It was, it was so neat. So that's one thing. The other thing I just wanted to mention, I'm involved in the Friends of the Wyndham School and we have a lot of projects going, including this floor, which will be finished this vacation. We hope to have a little celebration to celebrate the new floor, maybe do a little dance on it or have, you know, something like that, just to celebrate the new floor and appreciate all the work, the hard work that went into making it happen, community members. So, and then also we have other things going on. We've got a sandbox out here that we built for the kids. We're looking for sand toys. If anybody has them kicking around, they don't use anymore. And we also have, we started seeds for raised bed gardens out there. So a lot of good, a lot of good projects going on. If you want to get involved with the Friends of the Wyndham School, you can see me or.
That's great.
Thanks.
Your seed lesson coincided with our seed lesson. So we were throwing seed balls last Thursday. Howie Iris.
I get to go up in front of the camera, huh? I'm Howie Iris. I moved here 25 years ago and sent three kids to this school. I've been here through so many fights and petitions over closing this school in 25 years. I have lost count of it. And I'm so proud that this community has always supported this beautiful school. It is such an asset to our town. And I'm so proud and I want to thank Mr. PJ for making this place so beautiful, the new playground, the new floor, the kitchen for serving kids. Everything about this place is just a beautiful asset to this community. And I'm just so proud to have it and know the community has always, for 200 years, supported having a school in this town for our kids. And I am confident that the people in this town will pull together once again and reject any proposal to do away with our town's school.
Thank you, Howie. I, see, don't Connecticut-Vermont. I'm sorry. I don't know what your name is.
That's Sarah.
Oh, Sarah. Oh, okay. That's different than what you said we have. Sorry, Sarah. Go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify real quick that it's Friends of the Wyndham School House, not just Friends of the Wyndham School. So if anybody wants to join in our meetings that we have, I'm Vice President, by the way, we are always open to more community members sitting in on our meetings and knowing what we're up to. Like Sally said, the floor and the, also the floor looks really great. And as most of you know, that was a huge fundraising project for us to improve the school for the kids because the kids are number one. They are, they are number one. And all of this fighting and arguing really is frustrating, I just want to add, because we're not really thinking about the kids, it seems. It seems like we always come back to the bottom line. And one can just look around and see the art that's behind Mr. PJ that the kids are experiencing this year for the first time in a way that they never have. And the new floor and the playground and the sandbox and last year's pizza experience and, 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 and. It's like these kids are gonna lose out on all these opportunities if something happens to go awry to Wyndham Elementary School. Thanks.
Thank you, Sarah. And I'd like to thank the Friends of the Wyndham School House. Thanks for clarifying that because it really is a beautiful floor and the things that have happened have been really heartwarming. Any other members of the public? David Lewis.
I'm gonna just be quick because I have way too much to say. I'm just tired of our town being known as the town with this school issue constantly. When I say, hey, I'm from Wyndham, people are like, oh, man, it's a great little town. Here's some stuff going on with the school. It's really not something I'm, you know, that's gotta come to an end at some point. This is, this is silly. It's getting too ridiculous. And yeah, I'm just gonna cut it short there because I could go on. I have a long list, but I'll save that short enough in the meeting.
Great. Thank you, David. I appreciate that. Any other members of the public?
Well, I guess I have questions.
Sure.
So for this meeting, so with next year's school year being in Limbo as of this moment, due to either A, a possible restructuring, or B, a staff restructuring. I mean, right now, there's a possibility for, you know, all new staff next year. What's the, because right now Mickey has resigned.
Oh, I thought we weren't supposed to name names.
Uh, just, just children.
Okay.
Yeah.
The other teacher has resigned.
Five.
She has told us as parents.
Um, that's not anything that we can talk about until that comes forward.
So with that, if that is going to happen, how do we look as parents to next year? And with the staffing shortages in Vermont, how, I mean, there's already numerous vacancies throughout other school districts, and how are we going to fill those?
Thank you. Bill, I'm gonna let you answer that.
Yeah, I'll address that during my superintendent's report. I think that's the appropriate place because I have many issues to advise the Board on about next year. And I think that'd be the appropriate location.
Okay, so it's not fair.
That's right.
Okay. Before I go, Abby, Kermit Blackwood showed up. He's here. And then what I'm looking at right now.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that again? I didn't hear that.
Kermit is here.
Okay, thank you.
And then I'm gonna go, I'm looking, I'm gonna go with Russ, Sarah, and then David.
I would like, can you hear me?
Yes.
I would like to say that the discussion about the school closing or not is something that can come after we've talked about the budgets. Because the first item on the budget is to review the budget proposal that Abby had requested and that we need to decide on which budget we're gonna work on. And once that is decided, we can have people comment on whether the school is gonna close or not. But this is not a discussion about closing the school. This is a meeting about determining the budget we're gonna offer to the town.
This is public comment time. This is public comment time, Russ. This is when we're gonna talk. Thank you. That's all I have to say about that right now. My hand is up. I'm waiting for my turn to talk. That's what I have to say about that.
I appreciate you said what you want to say, but you forgot to wait until you're recognized by the Chair to talk. Is that something? Thank you.
Alright, great. Thank you, Russ. I am, because we're still in members of the public, and I am just gonna recognize the hands that are up. And again, we're limited to two minutes. So I think I'd Sarah and then David.
Yeah, I just had a quick question come up as Erin was talking because she does make a good point. There's like a major, you know, staff shortage across all jobs in Vermont right now. And I was just wondering, maybe, Bill, this would be more for you when the time comes. Just an overall question, like, if there is such a staff shortage, why would we want kids in overcrowded classrooms if the school was to close and then now kids have to go to other schools? Like, it just is, I don't know. I don't know if somebody can guide me on that as to why, why would it be a benefit to the kids to be in a hard, in a more crowded classroom if there's already less staff onboard?
Okay, so Bill, do you want to add that to your discussion when you address Erin's questions?
Yes, I can do that.
Great. Alright, Sarah, you good with that?
Yeah, that's great. Thanks.
Thank you. David.
I just wanted to add one thing that I can almost guarantee that if this school closure stuff wasn't a consistent thing that came up every couple of years, we would be able to keep valuable teachers. We'd be able to keep valuable personnel. Because they know, just like all the other surrounding towns, they know that it's like a gamble. You know, who wants to take a gamble on their career, especially with teaching these days? Come on, like, there's your answer. That's why everyone's leaving. Because the huge, oh, I'm gonna get fired anyways because the school's gonna close, is over everyone's head consistently. It's an easy answer to that.
Thank you, David. I have Howie Iris and then Sarah. I see your hand up again.
Yeah, I just want to add to this conversation that we've had our teacher, Mr. PJ's been here for 19 years. How many schools have that kind of consistency with teachers? Sally was here for how many years, Sally?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four years. So in this room, we have two teachers between them with over 50 years of experience. And to say that we're not going to be able to hire a teacher, I've heard that before. I've been here. I was here on the committee that hired Mr. PJ. And before Mr. PJ was here, we had several years of high turnover. That happens in schools periodically. It's not a reason to close the school. You need to hire teachers, you hire teachers. That's all there is to it. We've done it before. We'll do it again.
Thanks. Any other members of the public? And Bill, I can't see everybody, so if I'm missing somebody, please just feel free to let me know. I can only see five people at a time. Well, four, because I'm looking at myself.
Will we be able to shout after the meeting, after the budget discussion?
Yeah, this is just members of the public at this point.
Hey, Beth.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I have no option to raise my hand on this.
No, I have the option to see everybody, Crystal. So no, please feel free to shout out. I'm more than willing to make sure you're heard.
It's under reactions, Crystal. You can look under the reactions and they'll give you the option to raise your hand. And I think, I know there's a lot of people, Beth, I'm gonna do my best to help, but I think Lain had her hand up and then it went back down, so I don't know if there's anything she wanted to say.
Yeah, please feel free. Like I said, I can only see so many people. So, thank you. Crystal, do you want to add something?
I do.
Okay.
You know, Howie can have an opinion, other people can have an opinion. But the fact of the matter is, this kind of falls on people that are currently attending Wyndham right now. And maybe not everybody is having problems, but we had a big problem to the point that one of our kids now goes to towns in school. So I would love the choice because it's quite difficult having two elementary kids in two different schools. That's it.
Okay. Thank you, Crystal. Abby, did you say that somebody else was on?
I believe at one point had her hand raised. I'm just not sure if it did go back down if that was an accident or not.
Okay, just holler, please, if that changes. Sarah, see you around.
I agree. I think school choice is a great idea, especially when Wyndham is part of that choice.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. Any other members of the public? Crystal, your hand's up.
When Bill does his superintendent report, if he could clarify, I'm a little confused with school choice. Because I think the only option to keep Wyndham open is if a merger happened with another school district. So I'm wondering if he can touch on that. If Wyndham goes school choice, will that leave Wyndham open? Or do they have to merge?
Alright, so Bill, you met that?
I do.
Great. She'll speak to that. Okay, any other members of the public? Okay, hearing none then. We are gonna move on to old business, which was the budget. So we're looking, that was why we have this meeting tonight. We weren't aiming to adopt the budget in our last meeting. So typically, we meet the third Tuesday of every month. We had the holidays so that we can get our budget secured. So that's what we're working on right now. Does anybody want to?
So at this time, if it pleases the Chair, I'd like to ask Ms. Garland to talk about what we were asked the last meeting, which was to create a new budget involving two teachers and a part-time principal, and then go from there.
Great, thank you. There's, I think there's some budgets back there. If anybody maybe just want, there's another one here. Somebody wants to look at it. Great, thank you, Lori. Crystal, you obviously, you found your hand. It's still up. Just in case. I don't know if you wanted to say anything just before Lori starts. And I have absolutely no idea how to do that, so I'm.
Sorry, I forgot.
No, 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 it's okay. I don't know how to do it myself. So, alright, Lori.
Okay, so we were asked to basically cross out two full-time teachers and a half-time principal. And request was done at the average cost of a teacher, which is, including benefits, $85,000 apiece. So that is what I did. And that is the budget that Bill sent to you last week, which I believe you have copies there in front of you. The total of that expense budget is up $75,000 from the previous year, or the year we're in, which is a 17% increase. So how that translates to a tax rate is on the summary sheet. So if you look at the summary sheet, you can see that we added the teachers and the half-time principal, which brings the budget to $509,464. There does need to be a decision made also about $30,000 of fund balance. In the last budget that you approved, you also approved to use $30,000 of your fund balance to buy down the tax rate a little bit. So you'll see at the bottom, the tax rate has, without the surplus added, and with the surplus added, so a difference of nine cents there. So that is where we are at right now, looking for action on this budget and whether you still want to apply the $30,000 of fund balance.
Okay, Lori, can you just remind me the number of the previous budget that we talked about at our last meeting before? I think it was like 473?
Yes, it was, we're gonna, let me just pull it up there so I'm looking at the correct number. Here we go, there's the summary. 47869.
47869, great.
Right, and that was an increase over previous year of 8.5%.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so we're looking to adopt the budget. So does anybody want to give it a go?
You, Russ has his hand up.
Oh, sorry, Russ. Yep, go ahead.
I would like a motion to consider this budget so we can have some discussion on it. It would need to be seconded and then we can have a discussion.
Yep, sure, I'll second it.
Abby had suggested this as a budget. I was wondering if Abby could explain to us why she thought two teachers and a principal would be better for the, for the children at Wyndham Elementary School.
So just to be clear for the notes, the motion is to, are you saying to approve that?
Yeah, to approve the $509,464, which is two teachers and a half-time principal. You had recommended this and asked it to be brought forward. And I'm wondering what your thinking was and why you had thought that way.
Well, it was just the idea of potentially restructuring the school, what that would look like. There were unknown variables with what this number could be. And to do due diligence and make sure what presented to the taxpayers, the most accurate budget as to what we are looking at was reasonable to just take a look at that option. Clearly, that significantly a lot more money. So that's, you know, that's a lot more money than, than I would have thought. But I think also, we can learn more when we hear from Bill about kind of where things are at with the hiring process and that kind of stuff. But it is, it is an expensive budget, for sure.
And you would explain why you thought two teachers and a principal would be better for the education of the kids?
Well, for two teachers and a principal, if it was to be restructured, could potentially provide extra supports for the teaching staff. So if there are issues that are challenged, instead of having to go to the supervisor reunion to have staff that are more regularly there that were able to address things on a lower level, could be more beneficial. But it all also depends on, you know, is that, is that a structure that, you know, people are even interested in? It seems to have historically run with the teaching principal. So, you know, I'm glad we're having this discussion. I hope people chime in on what their thoughts are. If people were content with a teaching principal, then clearly that's a less expensive option to go, then that's a wonderful thing. But if the more expensive option is there, what are other people's thoughts on that? Like, what do people think? Is that, is that worth it to folks? Um, that was my thought with asking, because there was also the chance that depending on who would be hired, the number could have been lower. Um, so that's just why I wanted to see that, is to see, you know, could we have maybe a different structure and come in under budget? But it doesn't look as though that is what was able to happen.
Thank you. Beth, how do you feel about having two teachers and one principal in the school? Do you think that would improve the education of the children?
Um, I think it'd be wonderful to have five teachers and a principal and, but, uh, no, that's not, it's, you know, I think Abby was just looking to see what was available out there. I have a couple of hands up. Um, Ross, are you done?
What?
No. So I, I have Crystal and I have Howie. And if there's anybody else, please let me know. So Crystal, go ahead.
Um, I just want to point out that, um, when I moved here, I don't know, twenty-some odd years ago, the structure was a principal and two teachers. Um, and that was the structure for a long time. We had Mrs. Rice as a principal, and then we had Roberta Stradlin, who actually, I believe, hired Mickey. Um, and I will say that structure was a nice structure. That's it.
Thank you, Crystal. Um, Howie?
Uh, Crystal said one thing I wanted to mention, which is, yeah, we, we have run this school for many years. We've got a structure, so it's not unusual. My question is, how, where does this put our tax rate? If we go with this configuration of this budget, where does this put us in relation to the other towns? Is our property tax in the ballpark? Does it send it sky high? What's, what's the end result?
Lori, you want to answer that? Yes, Kathy Scott, I see you along on a second.
So, Howie, a question was, where does this put you in relation to the state? The firms that have states?
The surrounding towns.
Um, yeah, by far the highest. Um, with this, in particular, with this, um, tax rate here, you've got, you know, Marbury was like a dollar ninety in that area, um, West River, uh, because of the CLA. Now, remember, a lot of this increase in the tax rate is because of that CLA, right? We talked about that multiple times. Um, so you've got districts in, uh, West River, Jamaica, it's going to top over the two-dollar mark, just barely. Um, but certainly Wyndham in the state has the highest tax rate, um, last year, or for this year.
And what was that, what's, what's the number for this budget, the number B?
Uh, two oh one.
Two oh one. Thank you.
Uh, Michael Pelton and then Sally Newton.
Just a side note on the CLA. Um, in theory, hopefully, it's going to start coming down here pretty quick. Uh, but in the short term, uh, we are either number one or number two. I can't remember which, but in terms of the highest CLA scheme. So it's not something to be proud of, it just happens to be, be the way it looks.
Okay, thank you, Michael.
Beth.
Oh, sorry, Kathy Scott, I'm sorry, Sally. Kathy Scott.
Um, I have a question for Russ, coming. Um, Russ, you asked a, a good question of Abby and then I'm lucky I have the same question of you. Where do you come down on benefits or lack of benefits of two teachers and a principal?
I, I support it a hundred percent. I'm a hundred percent in, in, in favor of having two teachers, one who's dedicated into the pre-K or the kindergarten, the second grade, and another one that's for the upper classes, being third to sixth grade. I think all the children could benefit from that. I think if we had an additional half-time principal, the principal would come in and improve the teaching skills of the teachers that work with children who might have remedial needs in either reading or mathematics or some other area, I think having, um, three professional people in the building would be a tremendous benefit um, for, for the children in the school. I think it's, it's something that would, would definitely improve the end result of the education process.
Would you support, uh, would you support the school in helping the community to be willing to fund that budget, Russ, you personally?
Oh, I, I pay my taxes like everybody else does, and I think that...
I didn't ask you that question. I asked you if you would be willing to support that concept with the taxpayers.
I, I have, I have no, no problem supporting the fact that two teachers and a principal would be much better for the kids in Wyndham. The question is, because we're a democracy, is what are the taxpayers willing to pay for?
Well, I'm sure you're voting, you're voting to vote for that, I'd like to know that.
My, my vote is secret, and I'll tell you that, and it's always yours and everybody else's. But I, but I'd like to bring, what I'd like to bring out here...
Thank you.
What I'd like to bring out here is that in two thousand twenty, when I was elected to the board, there was a budget brought forward for five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And that was voted down. And that budget was decided by three people on the school board. And since we're a democracy, I think that everyone in town needs to know that there are alternatives to a good education. If the children want to have two teachers and a principal and the people are willing to pay for it, that's fine. But if they want to be able to send their kids to a school of their choice and save approximately sixty thousand dollars a year in taxes, they could have that option. And I think that because we're a democracy, the voters of Wyndham need to be able to know and understand what the choices are.
But that's not the question you asked.
I know it's not, but you, you opened up Pandora's box.
Oh, I did?
All right, we're, um, I'm sorry, we're, yeah, we've got to stay there for two minutes. Hold on, one second. I have Sally, and then I have four hands up here, and then Howie. Um, so Sally, please go.
Well, I, I would also wanted to mention that we have had that structure here before. And I think it can work well either way. I think that when Mickey and I were both here, he was the teaching principal, I think things worked really well. And I think they have worked that well that way. I think we may need to consider, when you're trying to find a new person, it might be hard to find a teaching principal.
Yeah.
There are not that many people out there that are willing to do that. But there are also different arrangements. For instance, when Roberta Stradlin and Madeline Rice were here, they did special ed. They were part-time principal and part-time special ed. There may be some flexibility. We may need to have some flexibility going forward. Now, I don't know if you can do that in a budget, but...
Great, thank you.
I, I don't necessarily, necessarily think that having a, a principal separate from the teacher is going to make things necessarily better, because I've seen it work really, work really well both ways.
Yeah, I didn't get to Kathy Scott to ask my thoughts. And I've only gone on the last few years what I've seen here, and it, it seems like it's been learning. Um, okay, so I have, Sarah and Crystal, you've already, you've spoken. If you don't mind, I have somebody else, James Lawler, if you don't mind to share.
Mine's just, mine's just really quick, and it's just a shout out to Lori. So thank you, Lori, for doing the budget a gajillion times for everybody and like redoing the math and like just really going above and beyond to make sure that we have all of our questions answered. So thank you very much, Lori.
I agree, thank you. I would be lost without you. Okay.
Um, I just want to comment on Russ's statement. He said there would be savings of sixty thousand dollars. How would he know that number? And where did, can he back that up? Is that possible, Russ?
Yes, I can back it up.
But off of what? The budget hasn't been tested?
The budget? The budget that we're voting here is five hundred and nine thousand, four hundred and sixty-four dollars.
Mm-hmm.
And if you look at Lori's calculation for school choice for two thousand twenty-four, it's four hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Okay.
And if you subtract the two numbers, you take four hundred and twenty thousand away from five hundred and nine thousand, you get, uh, almost sixty thousand dollars for the savings.
So that, the five oh nine, that's the only budget option we have right now?
No.
Oh, there's others?
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
This is just one that...
Do you have all the other ones too, Russ? Or is this that one?
Yeah, I think, um...
That you want to publicly spout it?
Uh, there's, there, there's this spreadsheet that Lori provided. And in, um, for, um, an operational school with one teacher and one teaching principal, it was four hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
What's the difference in that one?
The, the four hundred and seventy thousand would be for a teaching principal and one teacher. The school choice would be four hundred and twenty, so there's a fifty thousand dollar savings right there to go for school choice versus ha- having a one, one teacher and one principal. And if you have two teachers, the savings is close to eighty thousand dollars a year.
And that, that, that four twenty you're coming up with for the choice one?
That's what Lori came up with, four hundred and twenty to tuition the children to, um, a tuition school. And by tuitioning, it means they would go to another public or private school and we would pay only tuition.
Right, and does that include transportation and everything else?
That, that includes transportation, yes.
Okay.
Transportation's in the budget.
Is that correct, Lori?
I'm sorry, I was, I'm a little confused about transportation. Lori, can you just clarify that, please? Because I'm not totally sure on that myself.
Sure.
Uh, yes, it, it did include transportation as you transport now. So I just basically have the tran- paying transportation number.
So meaning just down...
A question as to whether transportation increases with, um, tuitioning students or, or whether it decreases, right? So, um, transportation is, um, in that number.
If that's for heading down to, towards Townsend in Jamaica, or is that any way?
It's as it is today. It's the same budget numbers as it is today.
So it's only down that way.
Right, so it could, could be a little, it could be more, it could be the same. It really depends on...
What's, what's the area that's included in student choice? Could it be farther away than Townsend, which is what the current index is? Would that not greatly increase the transportation costs? If somebody chose a, I don't know, further away than Townsend?
I think it was different than that one.
Can I hop in there, Chair?
Yes, absolutely.
I, I think, I think what we're trying to communicate is the board has asked us to create three different budgets, two for the last meeting and one for this meeting. One is approximately four hundred and twenty thousand. That is the estimated cost for investing in a non-operational school. The next one is four hundred and seventy-eight thousand. That is running similar structure that currently exists. The third one is five hundred and nine thousand, which is changing the structure to two teachers and a half-time principal. And the transportation is constant in all three. It does not change. And so your question about will transportation increase? That would be up to increasing more than what you're currently offering now. So your question about having transportation to other places other than Townsend, that is not contemplated in any of the three budgets. I hope that makes sense.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Great, Russ, you still have your hand up, unless there's somebody else that hasn't had a chance to speak.
I wanted to answer the question about the difference in savings. It's eighty-nine thousand dollars savings over the budget that I had made a motion to accept the five hundred and nine thousand to have school choice. Um, and that's, that's a large increase, eighty-nine thousand dollars. If you had school choice, all the kids could get on the bus like they do in every other town around us and go down to, to Lunnerdale. If another family wanted to choose another school to send their children to, they would make their transportation themselves. Is that so?
I'm still a little confused about the transportation, so I don't want to put that out of the dark, so, Russ. If you don't mind, Howie.
Yeah, I strongly object to calling this option "school choice", because it is not school choice. The option you're presenting is school closing. It gives zero choice to the parents who are very happy sending their kids to the local school in their town. It takes away the choice. It gives us one less school to choose from in our community. Calling it "school choice" is the worst kind of Orwellian doublespeak. Be honest, you're going to try and save fifty thousand dollars by closing the school. That's the proposal. It's not some fancy "school choice". We have school choice. Send your kids to whatever school you want to send them to. Nobody's stopping anybody from doing that. Are you ready?
Thank you, Howie. Do you have your hand up for it?
I do.
Yeah, sure. I'm sorry, Crystal, if you don't mind, Herman has it on yet. And then you can go next, is that cool?
That's fine.
Great, thank you, Herman.
Obviously, this is not the first time that Russ has introduced measures to close the school. It continually distracts away from every other conversation. It takes all the energy out, all the good that's already happening in the school. For whatever reason, conservatives are politicizing school boards all over the country. We can't separate this conversation from the same conversations that are happening across the country, even though we're not talking about some of the ridiculous things that people are pretending are the reasons that they want to close schools or politicize school boards. But time and again, individuals introduce bad faith arguments. Russ pulls out fuzzy numbers. He sounds like he absolutely knows what he's talking about. And if he just keeps bringing it up, we're all going to get tired and bored. And it's just going to happen the way they want it to happen. And that is the strategy that the conservatives have been using all over the country. The credibility of Mr. Cumming is so low.
This is getting a little personal. I don't think it has anything to do with the budget.
I don't, I didn't ask you.
I didn't say you did. Everybody's...
So, I would really like, if we could stop pretending that Russ knows all the answers every time he brings something up. We've already been here, we've already voted for it, we've saved the school two times. This is cheating.
Thank you, Herman. Um, Crystal, you have your hand up.
First of all, I just want to point out that Russ doesn't come up with these numbers. Lori Garland comes up with these numbers for the school board. Second of all, this nonsense about you have school choice, you're choosing to live here, I'm going to say it again. I have one child that was moved out of that school because it was determined he could not be educated there. And now I'm not allowed to move my other child, so I have two kids in two elementary schools.
Okay, thank you, Crystal. Hold on, sorry, Abby Pelton, looks like you have your hand up.
Yes, thank you. Um, so in looking at the budget, I guess to, to quickly comment on, on what Crystal had mentioned, you know, the challenges with, that runs into the supervisor reunion, um, and not specifically the school. Um, so just to be clear, that was a decision made by the supervisor reunion and special education, um, not because of the teachers. So that's the information that we've received. Um, and in looking at the budget that is being, that's proposed, we have a motion on the floor.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if there's further discussion, but firstly, for me, I, I think the original budget does seem reasonable. Um, and that as the school grows and we get additional students and there's a need to expand in staff, that we could approach that conversation again. I think it's a good conversation to keep going. Um, but I'm, I'm ready to, um, I'm ready to vote if you guys are...
Great, okay. Um, Russ, is that seem fair? We do have a motion on the table. I see your hands up if there's something else you want to say, otherwise...
Yeah, I, I just wanted to make a comment that for the last fifteen years, we've not had more than twenty students in the school, either under equalized pupils or average daily membership. And that it's unlikely to change, and the amount of students in the schools around the state have remained are decreasing on a regular basis. It's a trend that has had a fifteen or twenty-year trend. So in order to get more kids in the school, I think that's, that's wishfully. You're not going to get them particularly with the prices of real estate in Wyndham. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Russ. Um, Sarah, I'm sorry, we're going to call... Um, Sarah, I'm sorry, we're going to call a question, because this has been a pretty long discussion. Um, if you don't mind, um, unless it's really imperative to, to this specific discussion.
Um, it was just a, a question for Russ, because he mentioned the trends of students and the pupil count over the fifteen to twenty years. I was wondering if those fifteen to twenty years included a worldwide pandemic that made a lot of people move to Vermont?
I'm sure that it did, but, uh, Wyndham stayed open during most of the pandemic. And very, very few kids were homeschooled in Wyndham, other than I know of two that were homeschooled during the first part of the pandemic. But I think that, um, the overall trend in student population throughout the state is trending lower. And it's trending lower not just for elementary, but for high school students as well. So it's a, it's an endemic trend that the, the agency of education is also making. Thank you.
Okay, great, we're going to call the question. The motion has been made to, uh, adopt the budget of five oh nine, four six four, uh, seconded, we've had discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Nay, nay, motion fails. All right, let's keep going, because we're getting this budget done tonight. Sorry, did you have your hand up?
I did, just a real quick point.
Yeah.
Can, are, are parents in Wyndham locked in to bring their kids here? Or can they, I don't know, send them to another school if they want?
If they want to pay for it.
Oh, so there is a choice. People do have a choice. Parents can send their kids to other schools if they choose to.
We operate, we, as a town, we operate schools.
So they do have school choice perfectly. They just don't want to pay for it, that's it. Thank you.
Um, Russ, I see your hand is still up.
Yeah, I think that, um, the issue is that the family is underpaying seven, eight, or nine thousand dollars in taxes for schools in Wyndham, then they have to spend another seventeen or eighteen thousand to send their child someplace else. So that if the Wyndham School Board were willing to kick in the amount of education taxes that the family paid as a credit towards their paying tuition at another school, that might be very problematic.
Okay.
But I don't think that's likely to happen.
Thank you, we're going to go on to the next budget. Uh, Lori, the four seventy-eight-six-nine, do you want to speak to that?
Um, sure, it's, uh, the budget that we talked about, oh, a couple of months ago now, I think. Um, but it, it's basically, um, the budget that includes, um, a, uh, teaching principal and a full-time teacher. Um, and then we revised it slightly, which is what the four seventy is, uh, to include the tuition cost um, that was, we added in, because we know about it for next year, so we had timed. So we thought we would add it into, to the budget, so that is included in there.
Okay, great, um, I'm going to make a motion then, just the four hundred and budget of four seventy-eight-six-nine, can I get a second?
I second.
Great, end discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. 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 Opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes, that's our budget, four seventy-eight-six-nine. There you go, Lori, you are done, girl, you can go. Have you finished, do you think I have the surplus?
Yeah, I, I would like to have that re, um-
Confirmed.
Reconfirmed that you are using thirty thousand dollars of surplus, thank you, Abby.
Um, you know, one thing I wish I had said before about what I support as far as teacher and principals and stuff. I, my, I've had my faith in Mickey, I think he's done an amazing job, obviously. Gail Lyman, so many people here. Did you? Well, that's, I haven't, we haven't finished, we have four more stuff together. If I hadn't done anything, it would have been to do that for you, and I'm sorry that we couldn't. But my hope is that he can in the future, so, but yes, I do want to thank you with all my heart. So, anyway, that is it. Um, minutes, I got to be honest with you, I did not read the minutes.
Whoa, 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 we need confirmation on the thirty thousand.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, I'm trying to move ahead.
We just need a motion that you will use thirty thousand dollars of surplus to buy down the tax rate.
So moved.
I second.
End discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Okay, great, it passes.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone, Lori.
Um, Beth, before you go on, I just need the three, um, board members to, uh, go and sign the warning. Uh, is the town office open tomorrow morning?
Yes.
Great.
Okay. And Beth, you have a copy of the warning?
I do, yep.
And you can just write in that number, four seven eight oh six nine, into that blank space. And put the date of, uh, four twelve two oh two three. And if everybody signs tomorrow, then we are good to go to have the warning to go in front of the voters for your annual meeting on May fourth.
Okay, thank you for that, that's all.
I have a pass to point out clarity.
Sure.
Um, so initially, when the first warning came out, the version that I saw appeared to, uh, include the thirty thousand dollar um, reduction in there, but it just displays the tax rate. Is that going to continue, or was that changed?
Uh, they just voted to confirm that it's going to continue, thirty thousand dollars put towards the tax rate.
Right, and that'll show up on the warning?
No, it doesn't show up on the warning, because it is not, um, it is already in their fund balance. It is not asking for future fund balance to be used.
Right, but wasn't, isn't there a provision in there where it talks about the cost per pupil or something?
Uh, that law changed this year.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Okay, uh, moving, are you all set, Phil?
I'm good.
Okay, so minutes, I got to be honest with you, I'm so sorry, I have not read the minutes from February fourteenth or March twenty-first. Can we just wait on that?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, everybody. Uh, grants follow-up?
Uh, this is a, uh, holding pattern, uh, in case there was an update from the Friends of Wyndham Schoolhouse.
Okay, I think the Friends of Wyndham School has done an amazing job, and we are going to wait until they have more to bring us next month. Because I'm sure in the-
Um, I just want to touch base on that.
Sure.
Real quick. So I have been talking with Liz again since the supervisor reunion, we're going to schedule another meeting with her. Um, us as the Friends, uh, board decided that before we move on to any next projects, as you know, the floor is almost done, and that's really exciting. Um, we decided we were going to ask the teachers what they need. See what they need, what they desire as teachers to be the best teachers they can be for the students. And go from there and see what grants, um, that we, we can find to fulfill all of those needs, wants, and desires.
That's dynamite, Sarah, thank you. Okay, on to, uh, new business, uh, we need to schedule the informational meeting.
So I'm suggesting you, uh, schedule it for May sixteenth, which, uh, is a Tuesday.
Okay, six, six P M.
It would be, it would be within the ten days of prior to May twentieth.
Okay.
And can I, uh, just chime in real quick about the grants as well? Uh, we have another meeting coming up. Um, the last meeting, we were reviewing, I think, the number was seventeen grants that we, um, have, uh, would be appropriate, not only for, um, supporting Wyndham Elementary School, but also, uh, the Jamaica Elementary School, potentially other, other schools within the district. Um, or within the supervisor union. So, uh, just to let people know, please, we're, you know, if you have an interest in learning more about what, uh, what we're trying to get done, um, you know, join, come to one of the meetings, because, uh, there's some pretty interesting things on the table, thank you.
Thank you.
I, I need a motion to make May sixteenth.
I'll make a motion to schedule the informational meeting for May sixteenth at six P M. Can I get started? Great, any discussion? Hearing none, all those say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Dynamite, that's done, May sixteenth.
The month of May ushered in the big month of assessments to end the school year. Next month, students will do the final spring benchmark assessment on the Google's web platform. Additionally, the upper grade class will be part of the first students to take the brand-new Cognia Assessment, which has replaced the S-Back. Parent-teacher conferences were held final week of March. This was an opportunity for families to meet with their teachers, to discuss how the year has gone, and what to expect going forward. On Tuesday, April first, the upper grade students took a field trip to Vermont State House. They were introduced and able to sing a few songs with members of the delegation. A big thank you to Michelle Bosler, who was the driving force behind this experience. Thanks to the school board vote approving the dates, the staff had our first half-day Wednesday last month, with one more coming later this month and another in May. These days are very valuable for the staff in preparing for the end of the school year. Another successful year of winter sports was completed last month, with the final day of skiing on March twenty-second. This year saw just over half the students going to Stratton for skiing and snowboarding, while the remaining students went to the Edgar Bay Center for swimming lessons and free swim. The new floor of the all-purpose room is installed and looks amazing. Thank you to Ms. West for her continued patience. As well as a big thank you to the Friends of the Wyndham Schoolhouse, Michael Calabre, Greg Frost, Eric and Alexis Malkowski, Michael and Abigail Pelton, Bridget Gorbey, and anyone else who had a hand, who am I forgetting?
Sally.
Sally, thanks, Sally. Who had a hand in getting this stuff. It was a huge project that involved a great deal of donated time and energy.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah. Sally, what did they sing at the State House? What did you say they sang?
Songs?
Yeah.
Well, they only had three minutes, so we did a, a melody we squashed together. We, they sang the Vermont State song, the kids chose to sing that. And they were so excited, because there's the line in there about the Golden Dome, and they got to go see the Golden Dome. It was very exciting.
Yeah.
Um, and then we sang this pre-planet around, and then we pulled out our ukuleles and sang it, "Ain't Gonna Rain No More, No More." They were very cute, everybody just absolutely loved them.
All right, we are skipping financials, um, uh, Bill, superintendent report.
Uh, no, we inserted in C, uh, Abby, one of the BCTV annual meetings.
You're right, BCTV, sorry, Abby.
Sorry, folks, my, uh, I have, yes, my name, the town, it's E, not C. Um, so with the town meeting, we generally have BCTV at our meeting games. Um, and I, on the select board meeting the other day, or our town meeting, um, and I didn't know. So I thought that that was important to kind of discuss here, as far as what that would look like and the benefit that, um, you know, BCTV brings in, in recording these meetings. Um, just wanted to kind of have that discussion with us.
Um, can I just ask the chair of the select board, is that something that you guys have discussed about BCTV being at town meeting? Because I feel like the select board, you, you lead the town meeting, so I'm kind of throwing it to your hat.
We're going to have something.
Okay.
Something AV, but it's, so the conversation was just, if you guys were going to have the, uh, BCTV there anyway, there was no point in having two different AV setups. So either we have one that the select board sets up and it, you know, works for everybody, or we have BCTV in my mind, do the whole meeting if that's feasible.
Okay, great, so we can look into that, Abby, that's a great question. Um, so yeah, maybe you can talk to Brian before you go. Does that sound good, Abby? We'll look into it.
You betcha, thank you very much.
Absolutely. Um, all right, Bill, uh, superintendent report?
Uh, okay, I provided a written report, as I usually do, but you guys provided me a ton of questions tonight, so I'm going to take them as they came, uh, for my superintendent report, if that works for you.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, first one, uh, was on my list as well, uh, question from the audience about positions. So here's where we're at. Uh, the board directed me after the last meeting to post three anticipated positions. One, a teaching principal, one, a part-time principal, and one, a straight teacher. And so I posted all three of those positions. And as of ten minutes ago, we have zero applicants for the part-time principal. You have two applicants for the teaching principal. You have three applicants for the teacher, one being out of the country. So that is where we are right there. And to broaden that question of the availability of staff or hiring, just in general, uh, it is not nearly as robust as it was pre-pandemic, but we are seeing, um, you know, a handful of applicants for teaching positions uh, when we put them out in other places in the supervisor union. So I would expect that Wyndham, uh, if they posted their positions, they would get anywhere from two to five or six. But again, I don't know.
Okay.
That leads me to the bigger question, to reconfirm my situational analysis for the board, is that if you post these positions as non-anticipated, you are indicating to the applicants that you are willing to hire them. We will have to be honest with the applicants, that there is a vote to, in front of the town, for non-operational versus operational. Um, we would, based on the budget that was just proposed, we would not, um, post for a half-time principal. We would just post for a teaching principal. As of right now, that is what I am knowledgeable about, the vacancy of a teaching principal. Um, if another vacancy came to play, I would post that position. But reaffirming my communication to the board, if you sign somebody to a contract, you are going to be responsible to pay that, regardless of the outcome of a vote of the town, whether you are non-operation or operation. So going under our current budgeting structure, that's about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars that the board, if you direct me to post these positions, and you direct me to go do interviews, and you direct me to hire them, you're putting the board and the town at a hundred and sixty thousand dollar risk of a vote by the town to have a non-operational school. So I would like the board to deeply consider whether you want these positions to be posted now, or you should wait and see what the outcome is of the vote of the position.
Okay, um, I, I move to, uh, vote for the, uh, positions to be posted as non-anticipated.
That's fine with me, Russ, do you have any thoughts?
Is that a motion, Abby?
That is correct.
Oh, okay, I'll second it, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Whoa, 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 can I have a word?
Yep.
So I just want to be clear, the motion is to direct the superintendent to post a teaching principal position right now. And is it also to have a closing of the posting date? How long do you want it open? Uh, do you want me to put in the posting what is happening? Do you want me to wait until people apply and then explain that to them? I need way more direction than just posting in perpetuity the one teaching principal position for which the board has received a resignation.
I'm sorry, I thought Abby's motion was to post it with the understanding that we're still kind of in limbo. I, I'm sorry if that wasn't clear.
So just change the word "anticipated" and just leave the teaching principal posted and remove the half-time?
Yeah.
Principal, and remove the "teach" alone. And just post a teaching principal that doesn't say "anticipated" without a closing date. Is that, I guess- Is that, I guess I mean...
That's the budget we just approved, correct?
That is correct, yes.
So that's the budget we're presenting, and that's the budget that we're, that's what we should be hiring for. So that's my thought is post it and see who we can get in, and we can also bump that now once it's not, what was the word, the anticipated, was that the word? So if that word is no longer in there, then this could also get put into local papers and other forms of media to help with marketing and posting for the position.
So the motion is to post a teaching principal position with no closing date, collect applicants, but do not engage in the hiring process as a...
That was my understanding, because obviously we can't sign any contracts until we get the budget approved.
That is correct.
Does that sound good?
Yes.
Yes, sorry, John Vegan.
My understanding was that the $478,000 budget was for...
478.
470 roughly.
The one you lost.
The one you...
One, just, I can't find my number now.
No, John's right, it's 478.
Oh, 478, 69, yes, I'm sorry.
I understood that that included one teacher and one teaching principal.
That is correct, but the board has only received a resignation from the teaching principal. That is the only open position that I, superintendent, and board in receiving a resignation is currently aware.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Thanks for clarifying that, please.
So, am I to understand, we postponed our town meeting so that we could all be together? We kind of put the school in limbo because we can't do the budget?
Yeah.
Which is why we need to build that gazebo so we can all be outside.
Yeah. Michael, are you, is it, are you good, honey?
Yeah, I do.
Michael Alvin.
I just have my point ready. So my understanding was that the school board could hire a core position regardless of if it had a budget passed. Is that not correct?
So as of July 1st, if a budget is not passed, the school board will have 87% of the previous budget available to them, but they will also have to keep warning a budget until it passes in perpetuity.
Okay, but they could conceivably hire for the positions and operate using their surplus to augment their current budget and continue with the budgeting process. Is that correct?
It is correct, but my situational analysis also includes that the board is, does not know what the outcome of the budget will be, and they don't, which you've laid out really well, that they will always have that 87% access. But they also do not know now with this petition being brought forth, whether they would be hiring an individual who doesn't have a school to work for.
So yeah, we're just playing it safe here, we're just putting our options out there, but we're not signing any contracts because we're not gonna do that to the town. We're not gonna put ourselves in some sort of situation where if things don't work out well, now we've asked people to pay for something that we're not gonna be able to utilize. Michael, did you have another question?
I would argue that it makes sense to continue to try to operate the school as an operational school, given that's the word we're at currently. And if people are silly enough to support a petition that puts us $100,000 in a hole for this year, then I guess that's the conundrum we end up in. Whereas if they wanted to, for instance, they could change their warning for the following school year and wouldn't put us in the same conundrum.
Okay.
So the direction I have from the motion that Abby has made is that we are going to post the teaching principal position without the word anticipated, without a closing date, and I will post that and collect applicants.
Yeah, sounds good.
With the contracts being signed in April, is there a concern of not being able to keep the applicant if they are not given a sign-on date by a specific time?
Well, that presumes that I would go through a process to hire somebody without the direction of the board and before you had passed the budget and you had realized the end vote of the petition.
I'm sorry, I feel like I really kind of, hold on one second, Bridget. I, I am not at all, we should not be signing any contracts until we have a budget in place. So if that motion isn't made in that direction, I guess I'm completely missing what's happening here. So we can't, we cannot offer contracts until we know what we're doing as a town. Does that sound fair?
That is what we said.
Is that what you said? It sounded like you said that you could hire.
I hear what you're saying, Beth, but at the same time, it really is, you know, looking at supporting our staff. If there is a staff member that's also on the fence, I mean, being able to reassure them that this is what we want for them and this is the direction, I, that's kind of where my thought is, is that we've gotta support the staff. Every time we waver, that's not, that makes it a way less hireable position. This is my thought, is, you know, depending on what contracts are going on, is this going to set us up for a challenge with being able to hire?
Okay, sorry, Bridget Corby, and then Howie, and then Michael and Russ.
So if you post the position and collect applicants, will you talk to the applicants? Like, will you start the interview process and be honest that you have a vote coming without signing a contract? Because I think you're already risking not having a staff next year if there's not some sort of recruiting process. So I, I don't think you should sign a contract on April 15th without a school budget, but to have a conversation with incoming applicants to at least get them on hook and have that open conversation would probably be helpful.
That was my understanding, so I just want to make sure we're all clear. Bill, can you answer to that, please?
I have no problem emailing applicants and letting them know what the exact situation is, and that no decision will be made by the board until after May 20th, when they have their budget vote. And I'm gonna let them know in all transparency, there's gonna be a vote on whether the school is operational or non-operational. So May 20th is really the date in which I can give them more information.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you for clarifying. Howie?
Yeah, I think if we got a good candidate who's a good teaching principal, we should jump on it, no matter what's, because no matter where we are in the budget process or this referendum, we should sign a contract if we can find somebody good because they're few and far between. And in fact, having a good, good teaching principal in place is gonna encourage people to vote for the school. It's gonna go be an enthusiastic new person in here to help pitch the school. As far as the budget getting voted down, we voted, we funded this school for 200 years, there's no, I have no reason to suspect that this town will not fund the school. Because whether we fund the school or not, we still have to pay school taxes.
Okay, thank you. Sarah, you have your hand up.
Yeah, just a quick clarification question, if I can speak. So if a contract is signed with a new teacher or principal, but then the school closes, they still have to get paid?
That is correct.
Yeah.
Okay, so, great, thanks.
Okay, so where are we?
So we need a vote. I am clear on the motion. My, if this vote passes, I am going to post the teaching principal position. I will communicate to all applicants of the current situation, indicating both the vote and the budget vote on May 20th, and that they should prepare for more information as it becomes available.
Okay, great. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Abby, I'm sorry, I didn't hear, I'm, seriously, I can use...
There, can you hear me now?
Yeah, I'm sorry, we're following the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Great, that passes. That's where we're at. Okay.
Okay, I'm still on my superintendent's report. Next question was hiring challenges. Did I cover that?
Yeah, I think so. I think the fact that you've done some people, I find to be extremely encouraging. I'm actually really excited.
Okay, the next question was in general about staff to student ratio in surrounding schools. And our average staff to student ratio or classroom size amongst the WCSU is between 1.0 to 10 and 1.12.
Okay.
All right, and then the last one was school choice clarification that came from the audience, that you as a school district have an either/or, you either run a school or you provide global student choice to approved independent or public schools. It's an either/or for the district structure that does not preclude individual decisions of the board of requests from parents, but for global statutory decision-making, it's an either you run a school or you provide to the education of students as a non-operational school and provide tuition to public or approved independent schools.
Okay, does that answer everybody's questions? For Bill? Great.
One more question for them.
Sure, yeah.
If, Bill, if this is appropriate time or maybe not, or you still want to go on with your report? Do you want me to wait?
No, I've answered my question, so go ahead, it's number five.
Okay, so the, the next question for, you know, scenario is, is what happens, well, I guess, what would be the process to merge again? Could you explain that for everyone to...
Sure. If, so when we go back to the original merger vote of Wyndham, Wyndham is a part of the 7 through 12 at West River going to Leland Gray, and so if Wyndham wanted to merge into the West River District, the school board would have to warn a vote, or a petition would have to come to the town clerk and then the board asking to merge with West River. Then the town of Wyndham would warn a vote, voting to merge with West River. Then the individual towns of West River would all have to vote to allow Wyndham in, and that would have to be unanimous, meaning all of the other four towns would have to vote in the affirmative.
Is that good?
Yeah.
Okay, anything else in your superintendent report?
That is what I've got.
All right, we need to set...
Is that the same process, Bill, for a different supervisory meeting?
It's, it's for all supervisory meetings.
All supervisory meetings?
If you didn't join the, well, it's not a supervisory meeting, it's a district thing. You're part of 7 through 12 of the union school district for 7 through 12. And so those are union school district rules.
Okay, we need to set a vote for the informational meeting for that petition. Can we do that, please?
Okay, so the statute of the petition reads, "The legislative body warned a special meeting when it deems it necessary to call a special meeting. When it receives an application of 5% of the voters, a special meeting shall be warned within 60 days of receipt." Yesterday was the receipt. The legislative body may rescind the call of a special meeting if the school board called the meeting, but they may not rescind a special meeting if it's an application of 5% of the voters. So what that means is that it is a responsibility of this board to warn a meeting within the next 60 days past April 10th for a vote on the petition, which will look exactly like the one that was in the fall of 2001. Two questions. And it's crystal clear when you read the ballot. And then you have to have an informational meeting prior. My suggestion for the board to consider is, I think your constituents would really like to know the outcome of the petition vote before you go to your annual town meeting on the 20th, because you have a live meeting and you could discuss whatever the vote was under other business with all of your neighbors in the same location. So I would suggest to the board to pick a day prior to May 20th, but 30 days prior to tomorrow. So it's gonna have to be the 13th through the 19th, if you would follow that suggestion.
13th through the 19th of now until...
Of May.
Yeah, I'm just trying to pull up the calendar.
But legally, we, if, if that is not feasible, we could put past May, correct?
You could, yes. You have until June, there's 31 days in May, right? You'll have until June 9th, would be the 60th day.
Okay, Crystal, your hands up.
It's up to the board to decide when to do that.
So I have some questions that I'm actually waiting to hear back from regarding legality of the petition and that kind of stuff. So maybe, Bill, you can shed some light on, why are we able to, as a board, change the wording on the articles?
So the article is the intent of what you want to vote, and the statute decides what the wording has to be on the ballot.
And if the wording on the petition isn't relative, we don't have to accept it, correct?
You could direct me to have an attorney review that, and you guys can meet again in a week, and I can give you those, I can give you whatever the attorney says. I would just, I would just say the same exact wording you received in the fall of 2021, so I wouldn't expect a different answer, but I work for your direction. So if you guys want to direct me to run this by the attorney, I'm more than happy to do it.
I don't think we'd be able to meet with the attorney as well?
If you want to pay for that, I can do whatever you want to arrange for.
Yes.
I just have a question, how often are we allowed to submit these petitions? Is this, is there no limit, like it can happen every six months, every year?
Every year.
Every year. Great, sorry, Jim.
Mr. Anton mentioned something about a percentage of voters have to be there, otherwise it can be rescinded. What's the threshold? Where are we at on that?
7.38% of the registered voters were affirmed by the town clerk on the petition.
And what's, what's the number where it can be rescinded by the board?
The board can only rescind if the board makes a warning, not the board receives a petition.
Oh, okay.
It's, it's put in place so that the board can't overrule the citizenry.
And the number of people that signed the petition, what is it, like 27?
I think the number, I think it was 24.
24.
Yeah. Crystal, you have your hand up? Okay, so Abby, Russ, what do you want to do? Abby, you sound like you want to have Bill talk to a lawyer, so let's just make this decision. If we want to meet again next Tuesday, I'm happy to do that, but we need to make a decision.
Yeah, I'd like to meet again next Tuesday and get some more clarification.
Great. Russ, are you okay with that?
Well, I think the wording on the petition is exactly the same it was the last time, and as Bill said, it's unlikely that the attorney's gonna change his opinion. So I think that's simply just delaying the inevitable.
Um, it's, yeah, it's also, I'm just trying to wrap my head around when we're gonna do this, that's all. I don't really think it's too much, we're just looking at another week. I don't really think it's too much, we're just looking at another week. I think we've been through a lot tonight, if that's all right with you. If we can just meet next Tuesday, Bill?
Yeah, I'm on vacation, but I'll make it a bit, I'll be available if I need to for you guys. We'll do it in six. I will reach out to the attorney. And is it the will of the board for me to ask the attorney to attend the meeting and discuss this with you live?
I don't feel that you, yes?
I mean, you're doing something.
I lose the school anytime.
You live within the term.
Okay, yeah. Except here's the thing, this is the only thing we're talking about. There's no additional, there's nothing added to this conversation. It is strictly this, petition, and that's it. And everybody needs to be on board with that. We can't all bring in all the other things that we have going on in our head. It's just not fair, and Bill's on vacation.
It will be an executive session probably because you'll be receiving legal advice.
Probably other board members, yep, that's what I'm saying, just for all.
What is the maximum for hours for the attorney?
It'll be between 275 and 375 an hour.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, so we're going to, I see, Maureen, you have your hand up?
Yeah, thanks, Beth. I'm just curious, Bill, if you meet next month or next Tuesday, what does that do to the timeline for the actual vote?
You have to warn it between 30 and 40 days out. So if you meet next Tuesday, that would be the 18th. That would be the earliest date you could vote would be the 19th, which would be the Friday prior to your town meeting.
Isn't it, the warning has to be done in 60 days?
So there's two. You, as a board, have received a petition, so you must warn it within 60 days. But you have to warn something and it has to be public between 30 and 40 days before it can be acted. So you can't, so you technically would have 99 days before this could actually be voted on. Because you could wait 60 days, and then you could wait to the 39th day after that 60th day to warn this.
Okay, I see. Sorry, Crystal, and then Sarah.
Then Bridget has to get it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You can just throw stuff at me.
Does Bridget want to go first? I'll wait.
Okay, sure.
Sure, I just ask that the board not draw this out because I understand, looking at how it's worded, you're not getting out of having the vote. If it's worded wrong, the petition is going to come worded differently, I'm sure. The longer this takes, the more you put our kids at risk. We don't have a teaching principal for next year, that's a huge issue. I am very worried about my kids in the fall. And so the longer you guys drag this out, debating the wording of it, the more you're putting that at risk. This needs to be solved because you cannot fill that role. You can't sign any contracts until you have an approved budget. And I don't think it's a good idea to sign a contract before you have an approved budget because then if a vote doesn't go that way, you're tapping on a higher tax rate and there's less that you can do for our kids. We have kids here that we need to pay attention to. It's not about town dynamics, it's not about who likes who. We have a group of kids that have this coming fall in jeopardy. And the more you guys hem and haw because we can't get along, the worse it is.
I hear you 100%, thank you for sharing that. And Abby and Russ, you guys got that? It's a serious concern, so I'm all willing to try and do what I can to appease everybody, but it is, Bridget's absolutely right, the kids come first, period. So we're going to meet Tuesday and figure this out, and then that's it. Crystal, and then Sarah.
Um, I just would like, Bill, to clarify for everybody here. Based on the petition that was put in front of you, when a vote happens, if the vote to offer school choice prevails, that means that the school closes. It doesn't mean that Wyndham stays open and you get the option to choose another school. I really want to make sure people understand that.
Yeah, it is very clear that, well, let me just read the language from the ballot so that I can just be very, very, very clear. This is the question that will go in front of the voters. Shall the Wyndham Elementary School be closed and all educational operations at that location be terminated at the end of the '22, '23 school year? And shall the voters authorize the board of school directors to provide for the education of the school district's pre-K to sixth pupils by paying tuition in accordance with 16 VSA 21? That's the first question. The second question, subject to voter approval, Article 1, shall the voters at Wyndham School District pursuant to the provisions of 16 VSA 1821 authorize the board of school directors to pay tuition for its pre-K pupils at an approved independent elementary school or an independent school meeting education quality standards? That is what will go before the voters at the date that is decided by the board after they meet with the attorney. Was that clear?
Yes.
Yes. Real quick, can I just, Bill, is it possible to do the meeting, can you find out before next week? If you're on vacation, can we do it Friday? Can we do it Thursday?
For what?
The language.
No, Tuesday's fine, Tuesday's fine.
I have a quick question.
John has his hand up.
My question is about the calendar. If the Wyndham Elementary School Board approves the language in that petition, February, I forgot, February, April 18th? What's the soonest that you can warn, the soonest you can have the vote?
19th, May 19th.
May 19th?
No, that's the 18th, isn't it?
Can you do it sooner? Can you do it tomorrow? I'm just asking, can we do it?
So May 19th, so 31 days after.
Or do we need, well?
May 19th.
Bill, like you said, is it possible to do it sooner?
Town meeting is the 20th. That seems a little bit tight.
Or as has been suggested, if the language isn't going to change, do we, does this need to go through the lawyer? I'm throwing all these things out there, it's not up to me.
So part of why I mention that is exactly that. If you look at what was the guidance from the AOE, you know, 60 days of the receipt, the vote needs to be warned for 30 to 40 days. So if there's a vote, it would need to be held within 100 days of the receipt. Warn within 60 plus 40 day max to warn equals 100 days. So I completely understand that, wanting to push this out. This is when this came in, this is what it sounds like to me in, you know, what we have to work on to get it done by. But there's, this is a big conversation to figure out. Understanding the language, you can say that the language isn't going to change, but what was presented, I have some questions about. And I would like to make sure that I'm able to speak with the attorney about it. I think that's reasonable.
Okay.
So we can do a meeting relatively quick, I get that. But just to remind everyone, that is what the Agency of Ed responded to, how it was, I thought. So that is the timeline. So we have 60 days in the absolute worst-case scenario to figure this out.
Bill, just one more time, I'm sorry, is there any chance to do it sooner this week?
Me?
Yes.
Well, I can't guarantee the attorney can be there, and you guys are insistent that you have to meet with the attorney. So I can't even guarantee the attorney can be there at 6:00 PM next Tuesday. I'm just trying to acquiesce to the directives of the board.
Yeah, okay, so I think we need to.
But no, I cannot meet tomorrow night, I cannot meet Thursday night. I have meetings all nights, and I'm not meeting Friday night, I'm sorry.
Okay, Bill, that's fair. All right, and obviously if the attorney can't show up on Tuesday, then just whatever you, to talk to the attorney about, then you'll let us know.
I will be in communication with the board chair to be able to communicate to the board about where we stand. But I will make that request to the attorney, yes.
Thank you. Howie?
So my question is, if the first part of this thing passes and the second part doesn't, where does that leave the kids? Bill?
All right, is that to me?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, say it again, Howie.
Well, if the first part of this referendum passes to close the school and the second part does not pass,
the second part is about independent schools.
Okay, so that means that our kids could only be tuitioned to a public school.
It could only be tuitioned to a public school, that's perfect.
Thank you.
Okay, Sarah, you look to give your hand up?
Yeah, is it possible, I keep hearing that the language isn't going to change. Is that, is it possible for the first question to be broken down into two parts? Because.
No.
Ever, ever.
No, it's, those are the statutory requirements of the question.
Okay, I know that from the last vote, there was some confused vote afterwards that felt that they would have said a different vote had they understood the question better. And even though when we were reading question one, it's like, all right, the first part is really cut and dry, and the second part was like, totally confusing. And I feel like it's not maybe fair for folks. But maybe that's the point, I guess, for petitioning. Secondly, is the petition that was given to you public knowledge or is that a private document?
It's registered at the town clerk's office.
So anybody can have access to it?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think that's it, unless anybody else oversallied for you anyways.
I just want to thank you, Beth, for sticking with this school for so long. Your kids move on, and you're getting put through the wringer here. And I really, I feel very sad that this is what has to happen. Mickey needs to be able to move on, but we, we have to go through this whole ring and roll in order to do this so we can hire new teachers. You know, it's.
Seven times.
It's really, it's, this whole effort is undermining this, the school and this community. It's dividing the community and it's undermining this wonderful program that we have here. And I'm really, I appreciate you and I appreciate all the hard work and the staff that worked this year. And I just feel bad that they're, that's all being undermined by this. And I hope that people realize that. So thank you, Beth.
Thank you. Oh, sorry, motion to adjourn. Anyone?
I second the motion.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.